You have a conversation, the other time you'll notice is every now and then a word will just stick, you can't throw it out for this. Very, very seldom I make or say to read books and yeah. But she's back to you, each body workout, said every that I super bowl. I was like, I watched the game in two years.
They just did the whole.
I know, yeah.
I did, I wanted four of them. Or horrible football season. My team gave away all its players and was holding. Gee, who could have did that out there?
Stinkin' the cheese.
Oh, it's just.
Yeah, right.
Do you think they would just run off the court?
Right.
Because the law was gonna happen.
Right.
But when you think about it, it's right.
It happened to me some years back. The final score, the twenty five. I don't know. The one interception.
Okay, today is February the fifth, two thousand nineteen, the time is now five P M. Uh, work session, the city council has now come to order. The following items are on file for consideration of the city council. Uh, code of conduct and code of ethics and uh, council has put together two different items on here for us to discuss tonight. And uh, let's go ahead and begin. Uh, Les, do you have anything in particular you wanna discuss first?
Well, Mayor, any uh, any order of people you'd like to discuss, Madam President. If I could please, Mayor of Hills and Millers, good evening. Excuse me, I wanna say that I apologize for the, the very rough draft that I sent you the first go around. I was in a hurry to get it out, there were a number of typos. I have placed at your seating places, and hopefully everyone has a copy, an updated, somewhat improved draft and cleaned up some of the typos and um, but i- in any order, Mayor, I, I think that a number of you may have things you're willing to talk about and, and things on your mind, so um, I, anything you wanna talk about?
I guess the best thing to do is start first with the, the code of conduct and uh, get some, one dot.
It's one dot.
It's one dotted, but there's two.
It is one dot, the code of conduct is in the fact.
So, let's go ahead and get started with uh, some discussion. Today.
It's, it's uh, I, I told Les when we first started this, there are volumes and volumes of laws, specific, intended to address every eventuality, but we have ten commandments. I mean, somewhere in there, there has to be some succinct thought to what we do, common sense, but I guess if it was that common, everybody would have. There's all the two, you know, cliches you can say. I, I think it's important that there, there be a written expectation of what we're to do and perhaps not do. That, I think that's valuable. Uh, it's been suggested in, in my time that maybe we had a citizen review committee, like a police kinda thing to, to police us and I, I think that the better way is to police ourselves. I've been through a complex situation, I, I, I know how that works. At the same time though, I, I think it's valuable to, it's useful to have something written somewhere to which we can defer. Cause when something occurs that is incongruent with our thoughts, everybody recognizes it. But to some extent, it has to be identified and perhaps quantified in order so that it can be resolved. And I think this is an, an attempt to do that, it's a good attempt. It, it, it's important, I think, or valuable to distinguish between a code of conduct and um, what was the other?
Code of Ethics.
Code of Ethics.
Right.
Okay, they're, they're all similar, but, but at the same time, they are distinct and, and worthy of their own consideration. Uh, it's a, a good effort, it's a valuable effort, uh, thank you for doing it. I had a lot of fun with, with the first draft.
Yeah. I understand.
That's, that's just the cynical nature of my personality.
I understand, I understand.
And other than that, it's well done and, and I think it, it goes to what I had hoped we had had all this time that we didn't have, and I was surprised that all these years, it just didn't exist, but it, it's a good, it's a good point though. It, it says what I think all of us agree to and su- subscribe to in our hearts. What is expected and what can, cannot be tolerated.
And to the points you made there, what is the need or, or nonneed for having an ethics code in the code of conduct? And also whether or not council should be the one to police your own? And I think those are things maybe to, to talk about. I mean, regarding the one, and I've had this conversation with Greg, in terms of, I, I think in the abstract, it makes it, you know, it, it sounds good to have an independent uh, entity policing you or judging you as an allegation of a violation. I think as a practical matter, it is unwieldy and it's really, it's impossible.
I think it unnecessarily convolues the whole process and makes something that could have simple resolution, a huge complicated political non-issue.
And it would interject so much political, just kind of shenanigans and like scores to sell, at least potentially, I, I just think it, it's not practical to have that.
And simplicity, I think, has a benefit and I'm gonna say, less is more.
Thank you for saying that, sorry about that. No.
Okay, what is a class one traffic offense?
D U I.
D U I.
Yeah, D Y, D Y.
Years ago, all, all traffic offenses were traffic offenses and then everybody was going to court for like speeding. So the legislature, in an attempt to minimize that, made the lesser violations, traffic infractions, and there are civil penalties, civil situations between the driver and the state of Colorado for which criminal penalties apply. And that takes the D A out of the mix and it takes all the stuff. And it did the more serious traffic offenses.
Maybe missing.
Like, yeah, like that, reckless driving, D U I, failure to stop, seat belts, not so much.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, because I didn't know. You know, when Anthony mentioned the other ethics hearings that we went through, during all those hearings, I thought it was maybe just a matter of someone's judgment rather than actually a violation of an ethics code. But I think, you know, we have to um, take that into consideration. Somebody has bad judgment for judgment, whatever. The class one traffic offenses and the criminal violations for munish- municipal codes might be, especially the criminal violations of municipal codes, what would that be?
Well, it could be um,
En들만?
Hardly.
En들만?
Well, that wouldn't say a lot.
Of marijuana, right?
It could be, it could be um, I'm trying to think of, of some ways, but, well, no, I mean, it could be dog at large, it could be fish at large. Right, I mean, it could be, you know, I, but it could be like, you know, a, a dog offense, it could be, what's like the most serious offense you can think of under the law?
Did you charge open container?
Yeah.
Is that a serious offense?
Well,
Or municipal court?
Right, yeah.
I mean, if you have open containers, you can't swear on board?
Well, well, one is no proof of insurance. That's, that's state law and municipal law and we prosecute no proof, of course, that's getting back to the traffic code, but um, I just don't think it would look good, and I, I don't mean to interrupt Greg, but I don't think it would look good if you had a member of a board of commission who was a, an ongoing and repeated violator of the municipal code. Right, it, it kind of helps you ensure compliance. And while municipal court may not be, you know, dealing with the most serious offenses in the world, it, it's important for you all, already board of commission members, to not be appearing regularly as defendants potentially in municipal court. Right?
Well, I, I have a question.
Yes.
Can I go on a turn and?
Sure.
Alright, so, we have a liquor code. And I might, might be one of the few liquor store owners who's never gotten nailed, okay, for serving underage? But if it happened, do I have to leave city council?
No, no.
Okay, cause it, what does it mean when it says may result in immediate? And that's the problem with combining the city council and boards and commissions, I think they need to be separate.
You.
That you, so I'm saying, including city council?
Right.
Boarding commission members are one class, city council is another class, in the same policy. So, so the council could remove the boarding commission members, but elect the people that are different?
Well, I, I certainly agree that council should have the authority to remove a board of commission member, if that's what you're saying. I mean, I, I don't wanna have one set of rules applied to them regarding lawful behavior and then one set of rules, I, I don't think that's what you're saying, Greg, but having another set of rules for board of commission.
Well, I, I guess I'm saying, to remove a council member takes the voters.
You do say, you do say that on the back end of this, that the voters only remove a, a council member.
But by combining them, it causes some confusion. Cause it says here that no one can serve within lawful compliance, but they can't be removed without the voters, not elected.
Okay, and I, that's a good point, I'm not trying to, and I, I steer away from, you know, any notion of them, the council members, being removable for any reason. You're right, it's only the will of the, the voters. So, that's a good point, that's a good point, and a board of commission member could be.
I'm coming to your defense.
Good, good. Good to have you.
Because the last sentence of that lawful compliance is that if we violate the municipal code, it may result in a immediate recommendation of resignation. It doesn't say reg- resignation. The council can recommend that the, that person resign of its own, of their own will, but it's not removing them from council.
So, so much of the thing, no.
I, I think, I think in an attempt, where I presume to be, an attempt on your part to be overarching and inclusive, on page one, boarding commissions, third line in, it says, this includes city council. Rather than to distinguish to Greg's point, that city council is separate from and distinctive from boards and commissions. But you were saying, this applies to all y'all.
Right.
Include, you, you know what I'm saying, all y'all, including council, boards and commissions.
Correct.
And maybe there would be better clarity of understanding if council would be separated from.
Especially in that lawful compliance era.
Well, I, yeah, I think that there are certain inherent privileges, well, privilege, I just almost came out.
That's right, did you get that?
There are certain inherent responsibilities
There you go, good.
expected of council members that are perhaps not as prominent in the expectations of boards and commissions. I mean, uh, up here, you do the same thing as down there, this is a mortal sin, that one's medium.
So, how should I change that?
I have no idea, I just have no ideas. But I, I, I would think that, like, boarding commission, in, in definitions, maybe we need to single out city council and rather than include it along with boards and commissions.
You have, cause there's a city council definition, so all you have to drive, you just have to scrap those last three words.
In the lawful compliance.
Yeah, no, it says including city council.
Where it says including city council.
Right here, the green one.
Yeah. Can, can I have that? No, just kidding.
Cause you already defined it, it's already a municipal council.
Okay, right, good point. And, and that isn't the lawful compliance card. Right, Greg?
Yeah.
Period and, and strike, including city council, number two.
Yeah.
Number two.
I'm just gonna put a period to after the word resignation.
So, is the application to be on the run for city council, is that a state form or is it a city form? It's a city?
The petition?
Yeah. When you, when you apply to run for a city council position?
It contains language from state statute.
Okay. But my, my, my thinking on this is, at the time we, we decide to run for a position for a, a seat on city council, if we meet those, that criteria, then we should be good to go.
Right.
With the exception if we do something during the term.
That's my, that is what I'm, I'm trying to have, and I, I may not have done very good job about that, is ensuring lawful behavior while you are in these positions. That's all, because I, you know, um, you get elected and whatever, so, your opponent may make an issue of rightfully or wrongfully, whatever. When you're elected, fine, it's to ensure, you know, lawful behavior while you're in these positions. Or board of commission members are in there.
But it's also important to note that ethics is way above the law.
Sure.
The, the way you gotta remember the law is the law is the lowest acceptable standard in America.
Good point, good point.
Pretty much meet that criteria.
That's right. But it did seem important to make sure that that was in there, and that you would have lawful compliance while in office.
So what happens to the, if we accept something like this, what happens to that one clause that says to speak with one voice? Is that gonna go away?
Well, no, anything you wanna have in here,
Okay.
you can have in here and you, I'm sorry if that was omitted, I guess, and I tried to have that in the code of conduct, in that I say, if you guys reach a decision, either a policy decision or a, you know, some kind of legislative decision, you should all accept that, you should not criticize each other, you should not criticize, you know, the decision making, or the, the decisions that have been made. And, and what, uh, but, but I don't think you wanna sound like you're, you're discouraging dissent in the process, right?
Well, my point is, I think that, I'm glad you omitted it, actually, because I think it's too ambiguous. I mean, if nothing fits in the other holes, just throw it in that one, cause almost everything fits in that. And I think that is more of a judgment call than it is an ethics. And that's all I.
I, I thought it was pretty clear in my mind, it, it said that as you represent yourself to the community, speak with one voice. I don't, I did not do it as a catchall at all.
I didn't, but look at the two ethics hearings we had.
I know, and it's, I, I didn't think it, it's one of them.
No, no.
Because speak with one voice, if you're representing yourself to the community as a member of a cohesive board.
That's a conduct more than an ethics.
Well, I don't wanna, I,
That's all.
Yeah, well, I would say the, the point, whatever your, we're trying to get at in terms of saying, speak with one voice, I would say that is more of a code of conduct than a code of ethics. And I, I do wanna say, I'm sorry, I should have said this at the beginning, as I was doing this, and bearing in mind those ethics complaints that you had and you presided over, that was largely, if not entirely, allegations of what would be a code of conduct allegation. I respectfully submit. And it's hard to enforce rules of conduct. It kind of, I, I mean, right, if you have somebody who's really being unruly or behaving badly, then that is, those are rules of conduct that you can kind of enforce. But if you have something like, speak with one voice, and somebody is alleged to have run afoul of that maxim, it's hard to say that he or she should therefore be censured, admonished, what have you. Does that make sense?
Give me a true definition of speak with one voice. Well, if you're saying that if council has a, has a vote and somebody didn't want to agree with the council, is that, is that what you're talking, is that a definition of speak with one voice? What is a, what is?
When you vote, the majority opinion votes.
Well, the majority rules, but I'm saying that settled policy and, and settled rules are accepted. Now, that's not to say that, like, if you're voting on a marijuana license, that you, Councilman Benotto, can't remind people of your stand on marijuana, you can. But when you're, excuse me, let's say, let's say you're in a public meeting, you know, any kind of public meeting, this, speak with one voice, I would say it would not be appropriate for you or anyone else to say, man, it was really dumb for council to utilize marijuana.
That, that speak with one voice was really like Fletcher.
Yeah.
Right, good point.
And she wrote that for a particular situation that existed then in there in council, to try and
Right.
put an end to that kind of stuff, to your point, but and I think, say, this guy. But here, if, if you go to item E in code of conduct, it kind of speaks to that point, it says, outside of meetings where a lot of the discussions in that situation were act in furtherance of the stated policies or decisions of the city in general and your board or commission in particular, not in defiance of them, board and commission and or council, okay? Carry out the will of your particular board or commission if known and not your individual agenda.
Right.
And that's what was happening at that time when Fletcher was motivated to write what she did.
Right.
And, and, and I think this kind of addresses that point.
That's a better, that's a better.
And, and what it's saying is, once, once a decision has been made and, and if your position was not accepted, when we leave here, don't all blabber all over that, well, those idiots did the wrong thing.
Right, right.
That's not what we wanna do.
Exactly, for, for anyone on anything, and, and basically not be, not be critical of, of decisions made by council or council overall, in other public meetings, does that make sense? Councilman, okay, that's all, and again, not trying to, you know, trying to limit dissent or any, okay. And, you know, please understand, all the content of this, the, the form, the, the layout, I, I'm not wed to any of this, you know, some of the concepts sort of, but however it appears and
Okay, I'm done, I'm done.
Okay. So, um, I would like to go over a couple of things that I had just for typographical things.
For sure.
Uh, some run-ons, uh, a couple, little small things, sorry.
No, no.
Um, initiation, or initiating a
What, what, great job.
Is that the direct?
I don't know, I guess it's three?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. So, under uh, Roman numeral four, initiating a proceeding in ethics, the complaint.
Councilman, is this the new draft?
This is my old, my original one.
No, you have the new one.
I do, it's right here on the floor, because this is the one I have my notes on.
Alright, so go ahead and, we'll see if I.
And there, and I saw some that you've already remedied, but I saw one that wasn't, so like, and I'll get to it here, just a moment if you want me to. Um, said, said complaint must be predicated on conduct alleged to have arisen during the preceding twelve months prior to the complaint having been filed. Uh, my question is, is that a standard amount of time? Is maybe eighteen months better or six months better? Is this something like a boilerplate from other communities in which they have chosen that number, or is it just an arbitrary number?
It's not, it, it isn't, it is not anything that I've ever seen in any of the other ethics codes. I, twelve months admittedly is random, but I, eighteen months may be too long, six months may be too short. I just think that if somebody's going to accuse you of something, they shouldn't be able to avail themselves of the board of ethics for a really old complaint. So, twelve months is kind of random, but I think it is appropriate to have the equivalent of a statute of limitations here. But you could, you know, fill in the blank.
Okay, just, right to speed each other.
There you go, but that's having to plead not guilty.
I'm not guilty.
Well, I guess my, my concern is, is that, say if I do something to Karen and we have an issue down the road and we're both in a election cycle for something, and she wants to pull it out of her hat right before the election. I just don't want that to turn things nasty amongst people, I would rather it be done right within like three to six months of whenever the occurrence, you know, happened.
Is that ever occurring in everybody's mind?
Well,
Right.
Yeah, because you don't have twelve months to say, I recall this happening at this time, when really a word or two could get changed from, you know, your memory just because of the lapse of time. So, that's the, the reason why I brought this up.
Do you think it'd be six months or twelve?
I think six months should be enough, because if you have an issue with somebody, we should get it done right away, other than just let it linger for a potential political, um, move.
A year is a normal business cycle. For all intent purposes, as opposed to the annual budget, that kind of stuff. I, I see your point and I agree with it, but, but we don't wanna go back to a thirty-four year old yearbook page.
I like what's happening with that, yeah.
You know, it could be really stupid, ain't you go back to first?
Well, my, my point is this, if Karen is mad at me, if I wronged Karen in some capacity, I would rather it just come out right away. And, and if it happens to be proximal to when there's an election, so be it, that's the way it is, because that's when it occurred. But if you wanna sit on something just because you wanna hold that card for a political play later, I just, that's my only concern, is that someone may sit on something for a while.
Right. No, I think.
Or, or go back and research, you know, something years and years and years.
Right, so my thoughts are, I think six months would be enough time, so that way if you have to go and get, you know, any type of resources or, uh, you know, attorney or whatever it may be, cause that does take time sometimes. And even for us, just to get on the same day for a specific type of a meeting, that takes time too, because we have other things on our agenda that are two or three months out.
Yeah.
I think six months would be a, a number that would be sufficient to where you can air it. Now, of course, again, if it happens proximal to that time, then that's when it happens, and that's on you. But I just wouldn't wanna see people sitting on a card for twelve months, or even turn that into a blackmail one.
Sure, why don't you go ahead and continue on, we got half an hour, we got several people to talk to.
Um, sorry, only, that was my first thing. Give me a minute, man. Four, I guess it would be rules of ethics, I don't know, page number, this is, two, three. Four, under executive sessions, under confidentiality.
Right.
Um, the very last sentence caught my attention, said board or commission members may lose insurance coverage for revealing matters that are discussed in executive session. Can we define this? As opposed to just say may lose insurance, can we state what is something that would definitively make you lose your insurance, other than just common sense would, you know, indicate that? I think that that should be something in there for an example or something.
Breaking confidentiality does that.
It does, I mean.
What happens is. But there was a standard of proof. If it's like, someone heard it at the, the restaurant and then it was said to somebody else.
No, no, it has to be firsthand knowledge.
Okay, so, so I think something like that should be in there stating firsthand knowledge.
It says it in four.
It says it in four?
You can only file a complaint with firsthand knowledge.
Right.
Right, but I'm talking about the executive sessions portion about losing your insurance coverage. I just wanna make sure that that's defined.
Yeah, go ahead.
Let me, I'm sorry.
No, no, please.
Okay, so, in your insurance clause for any like directors or officers insurance or anything that ensures a board such as ourself, you have to, you have to stick to the rules of the organization. So, if you went to it in an executive session and heard something in that session and then passed it on to somebody and somebody is injured rather financially probably or reputation, they can come back and sue the city, but the city's insurance is not, um, it's not mandatory for them to cover you personally, because you worked outside the scope of your.
And having something like that in here, I think, would be definitive.
But SERS could have decided that.
SERS can decide that, but
Not nothing more, right.
If you do something deliberately against what the city, your responsibilities are any insurance policy has it insured on a whole or a lot.
Right.
And I think I read something to that fact, and I'm not sure if it's SERS information that I read, speaks to that exactly.
It's pretty broad.
Okay, I didn't know if that was something that needed to be in here for future council members, so that way they don't have a gray matter area. Like, well, how, how do I know if I lost my insurance? Because of a prolonged time.
Well, and I think in asking for an example, you're asking for.
Try to retain it, that's the other part, what if you were feeling like, I'm fighting this and I don't feel like I did anything wrong, I wanna fight this and still be able to maintain the insurance, that might be the other end, I don't know.
Okay.
If, if said, SERS discretion.
Absolutely, that's right.
If SERS oversees it, then I'm fine with that, as long as everyone else is of the same mindset.
The severity of the alleged breach, I mean, it would be like, if someone said, the mayor wore a strike tie in executive session, that would be okay. But if they said, Councilwoman Miles felt strongly about a certain thing in executive session, that obviously is not okay. So, it depends on the nature of the breach. Um, and it, it would be hard to kind of, you know, quantify, I think, in an example in there in terms of what breaches may have you waiving coverage, if you do it, does that make sense?
No, no, that's not the, that, well, I'm sorry, this is my interpretation of this, and if I'm getting on your nerves, tell me.
No, not at all.
You're not losing coverage for that specific item or whatever you did that was wrong outside your scope of what you were supposed to do. If somebody suits the city, and like we get lawsuits all the time, listing us specifically, if you did something that was outside the scope of your work.
That's when you may lose.
You, the city will not cover you as a city council person if you don't abide by the rules. You, the city will not cover you as a city council person if you don't abide by the rules and regulations.
And I understand that.
For that one instance, that doesn't mean that they're gonna exclude you from here on out.
Just for that one isolated instance?
But the city don't decide that, SERSA always decides, and the city never decides.
Sure, but that's, but that's in the language of an insurance policy.
I think that the statement as written is inclusive of the extreme possibility that could,
It's larger, larger than, uh,
Exactly, you cannot avoid everything that's gonna happen.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to ask, like, if there's something that'll joke out of it.
Also based on determination, not accusation.
Correct.
So, if someone accuses you of breaking confidentiality, that means nothing to SERSA.
No, that's right.
It's still gonna be covered.
Exactly, exactly.
And, um, the last thing I had was on the last page under J. It was the very last sentence, and I read it several times and maybe it just, it's just spinning in my head and I didn't understand it, but it felt like there should be something at the end of that preposition.
Oh, sure.
The more a board or commission member maintains their composure and professionalism during something the individual board or commission member doesn't agree with.
No, you're right, you're right.
What?
You're right.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to know, what is coming up?
Well, it, it doesn't make sense grammatically, um, I have no idea. Um, let, let me just go back and look at that, and I'll, I'll have it make sense, but you're, you're absolutely right. And I, I wanna tell you also, Audra had just mentioned,
Something that we're, something we're doing here, we're actually mixing the code of ethics or the code of conduct.
Correct.
And now, right now, we're actually, we're only talking about the code of ethics at this point. So the code of conduct, I want to discuss that separately, so are we gonna get on?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. I, I thought it was, this was all one thing together, that was, uh,
I wanna discuss the code of ethics first, then we'll do the code of conduct separately, if we have time.
But I, I heard you, and I will rewrite and try to figure out whatever I was moving,
Okay.
and, and how that makes sense. Audra was just mentioning to me that there ought to be something in here about charter violations. And not like an inadvertent charter violation, like, you know, council does something and, and we may have forgotten there was a charter provision, but like, um, getting involved in employment matters as an example. You know, it's in the charter that, you know, and it's an important concept to have everyone's defined rules, right? Like, so you wouldn't wanna go to Greg and say, I insist that you hire my cousin, you know, whatever, things like that. So there needs to be a provision in here, excuse me, that, um, you and board and commission members won't run afoul of the city charter. Just what you said, okay.
Am I up to? Okay, under rules of ethics, it's, it's okay, right? Under B, it talks about legal advice given outside of executive session? I guess the sentence that says, however, legal advice received by a member of city council and party is presumed to be confidential and essential, that such advice remains so, but I, I can think of all sorts of things where I might call you up and say, plus, what's, what's our obligation here, what's the law saying? Can you tell me over the phone, and then I wanna share with Karen or Joe or Ethan or, you know?
In that situation, in any kind of attorney-client confidentiality situation, the client can reveal with impunity. The client is not beholden to keep anything confidential. We, as lawyers, wish you were, but you're not, it's the lawyer. And I guess my, my point is, I'm trying to emphasize there that there are different levels of confidentiality. There's a presumption of confidentiality on my part, and I, I'm just not reading this, I, I just, you know, I wanna say that you're always, not executive session, but you are, you can talk to other council members about what you may discuss with me.
Okay, but I can't talk to a citizen and say, well, council tells me that the law requires we do this. If somebody comes to me and says, I disagree, and I say, council tells me that that's the least gotta be.
Right. And I would say, most of my legal advice and opinions are given publicly. Um, but I, I guess, you, you don't have to keep our conversations confidential. But there's a presumption, there's always a requirement of confidentiality on my part. So I'm not sure what I'm intending, um, for you.
I think the sentence literally says I could, I mean, I call you all the time with legal questions.
Right.
And not all of them rise to the level of attorney-client privilege in my mind.
Right.
So I think this technically says that it could be an ethics violation.
No, you're right, and it does say quite emphatically, legal advice received by a member of city council, so I can, I can modify that.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, yeah, that's all I,
No, you're right.
Yep.
Um, I like what I'm seeing, it's a step in the right direction, thank you for the work you put in.
Thank you.
I'm good, most of the questions I had were answered, coming down the pipe.
I just wanna say, I agree with Rusty, and I agree a lot with, uh, what was spoken by Mr. Matei and Karen over there, and it, it seems to me that we're on the right track here. Uh, there's things that, that were difficult for me to understand, but now the reasoning with the council and you and Mr. Sun has brought my attention forward, so I'm gonna leave it up to the mayor to do what he has to do.
The only question I had was, uh, this is on, uh, I've always had a question about seeking legal advice from another attorney outside of your advice.
Right.
That's the only question that I have, and I don't know what your advice is there. Should they seek advice from you first before they go to a second advisor or what?
Yes, I would recommend that, and here this discussion, it, it's arisen before, like, any lawyer will always have conversations with people where they say, well, I talked to another lawyer and they say you're full of it. And you have no idea if they've actually confirmed with another lawyer. But I, I would say, yes, because if there's, you know, my legal opinion, if you don't like it, we can run it kind of through the filter of staff, SERSA, other lawyers.
Exactly.
So, you know, you, you never have to accept necessarily what I say or my legal advice. So, I, I would, I mean, you do have to in order to, you know, maintain lawful compliance. But if you want other people's opinions and a legal opinion of mine, you can do that. So yes, I would say if you were going to do that, or somebody wanted to seek outside counsel, you absolutely should first get my legal opinion, know what that is, you know, have me explore other legal opinions if necessary. And then, I, I never wanna tell any of you that you cannot seek outside legal counsel on a matter.
You need to be, you need to be the first person to seek advice.
Correct.
In fact, you can't tell us we cannot seek outside counsel at all.
Right, right, exactly, that's absolutely right.
Especially where your interests may be countered in these things.
Right, right.
Maybe just, that's, you just best find that, maybe a little bit of,
Okay, sure.
I don't think I have.
Okay, okay.
Looking at, I think, uh, it's, then well, thank you.
You got it, yeah.
I have a question regarding legal counsel again, because in actuality, you are, you are the attorney representing the city Trinidad. If we do something that isn't covered under our, our, um, official duties, then we should seek counsel separately, because your main client isn't us individually, it's the city.
That's correct, that's correct.
Or also if there's an issue between you and one of us.
I take it out on you physically.
Yeah, that's right.
That is on record, right?
Yeah, that's right.
All right, uh, let's go on to the code of conduct, and we're starting in reverse order, Mr. Benotto, anything that, code of conduct?
I really wanna go, Mr. Ramirez, just to follow up on the differences of what other council members have on this and, uh, and go from there. Of course, a few questions I'd like to say, but, uh, I'd rather have the council address this first before maybe my questions could be answered by council and, uh, go from there, so, if I could just, just jump over and go to Mr. Goodall and, and whatever, and then maybe my question could be answered by council. Thank you.
Again, I think our, the code of conduct is on point, it's definitely a direction we need to be headed, and good job, raise that up.
Thank you.
Um, we used to have a pride horn, and that was taken out.
It was.
And, and what's your thought process on that?
The reason is because since all proceedings in ethics have to be public, and aside from what I have in here about, you know, possibly being able to dismiss it before it becomes public, anything you do on an ethics or a conduct matter is public, so it's a, it's silly to say that you could have a hearing and then issue a private letter of admonition.
Okay, I think that happened once in the exec session or something, so that probably shouldn't have happened.
Right, and, and since none of the ethics proceedings can happen in an executive session, I just don't think you guys can ever, as a practical matter, have a private, yeah, censure, ruffra man.
Okay, just a clarification on the last page, G, which is part of the code of conduct compared to the code of ethics. Just, okay. I guess, where does the code of ethics begin and end?
It would begin at the very start and end right before the code of conduct. The code of e- ethics is,
Right after the definition.
Right, right after the agreement.
Okay, so everything preceding that,
Correct, yeah, that's right.
That's established.
Correct, yeah. I thought, yeah, one question, right.
Yeah, it, it was just basically about that sentence at the end of J, because it didn't fulfill that sentence, I thought, in terms of what the definition of,
Right.
you know, they maintain their composure of professionalism, blah, 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 and it just didn't give the main substance of the sentence at the end, that, that was really about it, um, and again, there was just like some little typos that I found, and I'm not gonna go over that, I mean, that's something simple.
Would you like to show us again your,
I happen to have a recorder. Karen, remember?
No, I think, this is like the Ten Commandments of the code of conduct, I think, it's pretty, um, sensible. Very good.
Thank you.
On the one that Karen, uh, Sheldon mentioned, adhere, uh, G, adhere to Trinidad code of ethics,
Right.
and would this be the appropriate place to be included and comply with the rules of the charter?
Absolutely.
And it seems that this is the point of the rule, and if you seek charter, and I think that's a good suggestion, you have, Audra, by the way, that's, that's kind of key and fundamental to what we do, so it probably would be appropriate to include it, and that seems to me to be the best benefit.
But the charter is a legal standard, right?
Right, right, so I think that's right, so we could have it in the code of conduct and the code of ethics.
Okay.
But if one runs afoul of the charter, let's say, you know, intentionally violates the charter, knowingly, willfully, intentionally violates the charter, that it's a code of ethics violation as well.
Okay.
It could be, you know, actionable.
It would be a legal violation and potentially an ethical violation.
Right.
But then you'll,
It had to be both.
In light of the discussion, it needs to be reworded elsewhere to be included, where this was, this thing, and, you know, inclusion.
Yes.
That's all I got, my friend?
Okay.
I'm happy, I'm happy that it bothered, uh, the charter, yeah, with the charter, nice job.
You know, I, I like the code of conduct, I think it's very separate from the code of ethics and just the overall explanation of everything. Um, there's some other stuff that if we adopt this, I'll say at the back end, uh, if we adopt it. Um, but I just think it's time to move forward with the simplicity of, uh, both items.
Okay, and, you know, I, I want to involve staff, I mean, I, I have just tried to, you know, have a, a framework for you, things that I thought were important, procedures set forth that were really very unclear in the last code of ethics. And it was really hard to navigate through for purposes of having that hearing and things like that, so, because,
All right.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Good job.
Thank you.
Glad that's over. It was tougher than your evaluation.
Question done, we'll take a rest.